Oh, I can see it right here. Thank you. Okay, hello everyone and welcome to the regularly scheduled board meeting on 22 March 2021. We're excited to have everyone here today, our first meeting back in person with some of our board members while we also have some board members with us virtually. We're also excited to see our student board member as well. So we're gonna go ahead and start with roll call. Mr. Pendleton?
Dr. Akbar?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
Present.
Ms. Autry?
Present.
Mr. Bravo?
Present.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Here.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Here.
Thank you. Hello, and welcome to Shaheen Williams from STEM High School.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Williams, if you could do us the honors of leading us by with the pledge of allegiance, and those of us in the room will stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. Now, we're gonna start with community and school reflections, and we're gonna start with Mr. Williams from STEM High School, our student board member. We're excited to have you here today. Thank you very much, and the floor is yours.
All right. Hello, my name is Shaheen Williams. I'm a senior at NIPSTEM High School in downtown Akron. I'm currently in STEM's Biotechnology Pathway. After graduation, I will attend the University of Akron. Thank you for many students across the district. Other students have an option to continue with virtual learning. Finally, I want my fellow seniors across the district who have been working diligently for four years to enjoy a graduation ceremony. I'm sure that there are many families eager to see their students graduate. For example, many of my family members were planning road trips from Maryland, flights from Georgia just to see me walk the stage. I also missed out on seeing some of my cousins graduate a year last-
Thank you very much, Shaheen. We wanna appreciate you. It feels really good to be in this room and actually hear claps. So thank you for your words, and we'll definitely work with the superintendent to see what we can do about in-person graduation. No promises, but we're gonna try to do what we can.
Thank you all.
No problem. Thank you. Next, we have continuing community and school reflections. We have Mrs. McKittrick first, and anyone else, if you're in the room, if you can raise your hand, that'll be great on in-person or on live. Google Meet, so it'll help me manage it all. So, Ms. McKittrick?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mrs. McKittrick. Mrs. Mansfield?
I think they are still having issues hearing the people that are remote. A couple of folks are texting me, so, just so you all are aware. Sorry about that, trying to keep track of everyone there. Just wanna congratulate Jackie Silas Butler. Several of us got to attend the Women's Endowment Dinner, and it was a well-deserved honor, and it's always great to see Jackie get her due. I don't think she took any swipes at you, Mr. Superintendent. I kept waiting for something, but I didn't hear any this time, which is really unusual. Also thoroughly enjoyed the Red Oak event and seeing the honors for that this week. That was really great. I know they're working on their strategic plan right now, and hope that if anyone has input, that they can reach out on that. And I think, oh, also, congratulations to the Miller South School this weekend. They did their, he's a good man, Charlie Brown. I think that's the name, that, "You're a Good Man." I'm like, I knew that was one. "You're a Good Man, Charlie Brown" this weekend, so congratulations to them. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mansfield. Anyone else? Mrs. Autry? Ms. Autry?
Thank you. I would like to briefly-
Thank you very much, Ms. Autry. Dr. Hall? Thank you very much, Dr. Hall. Anyone else? I think that is it. So, thank you. I'm sorry, did I miss somebody? Okay, I think that's all. Thank you very much. We're gonna move to address, request to address the board. There's one request that we have today, and that's by Ms. Judy Hill, president of the Akron NAACP. The topic is superintendent search. So, Mrs. Hill, I believe I saw you here. You are here. Just wanted to remind you that you have three minutes, and we ask that you keep your comments to those three minutes, and then also not to have any remarks that are directly towards student records or any, directly towards any staff or administrative issue about someone directly personally. And we wanna just welcome you to our meeting today. Judy?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak before the board. First, I would like to congratulate Dr. James and Dr. Mick Williams Woods on their retirement. A wise woman, Dorothy Jackson, once said to me, "Your reward for service is more service." So best wishes to you.
That's awesome.
The NAACP works to ensure that all disadvantaged students and students of color are on the path to college or a successful career by ensuring access to great teaching, equitable resources, and a challenging curriculum. We are dedicated to eliminating the severe racial inequities that continue to plague our education system. Our ultimate goal is that every student of color receive a quality public education, like all students, that prepares him or her to be a contributing member of our democracy. Recognizing the importance of selecting the best superintendent, the NAACP Akron submits the following statement for your consideration. The role of the superintendent to lead and effectively manage a school district is essential in ensuring that the district provides a high-quality education to the children in its charge. The NAACP Akron encourages the Akron Public School Board to hire a superintendent who has demonstrated a commitment to equity that has led to improve educational outcomes for historically marginalized students, including African-Americans. Two, has demonstrated the ability to engage the community to bring about greater student success. Three, knows Akron Public Schools, ideally from the perspective of as a student, a parent, a professional. And last but not least, a superintendent who aspires to inspire the students of Akron Public Schools to personal, academic, and professional excellence. Further, NAACP Akron believes the community should have the opportunity to address questions and hear from the final superintendent candidates, in keeping with your equity and engagement component of the three-in-three plan. This kind of community participation would be an excellent opportunity to build the trust necessary to ensure an effective district-community partnership. As always, NAACP Akron stands as a partner to support a high-quality public education for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Judy. We appreciate your comments, and if you want to forward that to Ryan, so we can have your comments in full, we will appreciate it, and thank you again for joining us today.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we move on, I wanted to just take a small break to acknowledge that we are hearing that there's some technical difficulties for those who are viewing online. So we're gonna give our tech team some time to try to work on that. So thank you very much for this brief pause for our technical support. This is probably a good time to thank Ryan Rittenhouse and his team for all they always do to keep us connected.
Howard, where's the speaker coming? Like, where's the best sound? Like, when they're talking remotely? Okay, it's up here. Okay.
Did they stop the line feed at these?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
So we'll keep these on, and that'll pick up the sound.
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome back to the regular board meeting of the Akron Public Schools on 22 March 2021. I believe, hopefully, we are returning and that those viewing on YouTube Live can hear us better now. Hopefully, that is the case. So we're gonna go ahead and move for to the rest of the agenda. As there's no recognitions or communications, we'll move for any motions to approve the previous meeting minutes of March 8th, 2021, and March 11th, 2021.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, there's been a motion-
I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes by Mrs. McKittrick and seconded by Mr. Bravo. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Pendleton, roll call, please.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes?
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is personnel recommendations for professional staff and others. We're gonna move to Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the personnel recommendations presented in Categories 5 through 16. At this time, I'd like Kathy McVeigh to highlight one of the administrative moves and those recommendations.
Chaplin, would you like to put up some audio, please?
Is that my card? Yeah. It doesn't seem like it's on.
Ellen, what's the hardest thing in theater? Sound.
That's right, always.
Always.
Any live performance. Those taken for granted.
And excuse us again for the technical difficulties as we are navigating this new world of being both virtually and in-person. There you go. And we're back. Thank you. Mrs. McVeigh?
All right, thank you. Tonight, I'd like to introduce to everyone Ms. Carla Chaplin. Well, Carla earned her Bachelor of Arts degree from Ohio State University in 1985 and Master of Arts degree from the University of Akron in 1994, both degrees in the study of family and consumer science. She also holds a number of certifications, including adult experiential learning and diversity internal training. She's currently pursuing her doctorate in interprofessional leadership with the Cultural Foundations Committee. Ms. Chaplin began her career at Akron Public Schools in 1984 and worked as the undergrad community family services liaison for several intercity schools in low-income neighborhoods. She coordinated student and family support services, including after-school programs, health services, academic interventions, and case management. In 1997, Ms. Chaplin became a social services specialist for the district. She coordinated several local, state, and federal grant projects, serving students in grades K through 12, bringing many organizations together and creating partnerships with APS. In 2003-2009, she was a special projects coordinator. In this role, Ms. Chaplin developed a nationally recognized after-school model called Perkins Activities Central, hack brought community partners together throughout Southern County to address barriers to academic achievement. WKYC TV highlighted the program as a best practice in its 2006 documentary, Making the Great: Helping Our Kids Achieve. As the district's current director of Community Relations Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, she works to promote active student, staff, and community engagement. Her recent work includes a focus on diversity training and coaching for teachers, school leaders, families, and other professionals. As an Akron native, Ms. Chaplin has dedicated her career to advocating for urban families and children. She also serves on several community boards and advisory councils, including Academy Inc., Child Guidance and Family Solutions, Portis Pathway for Rural Health, and most recently the Akron Community Foundation. She's also a child at Family Leadership Exchange, class two graduate, and a Leadership Akron class 25 graduate. That's enough, Carla. Tonight, we are recommending her for the position of Chief Diversity Officer for the district.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Kathy. Good evening to the board. Superintendent James, Assistant Superintendent Mick Williams Woods. I am so very thankful for this opportunity. For me, this is the culmination of 26 years of work in supporting many others, many in the room, around removing barriers for students and families. And so I appreciate the work that is ahead of us. I embrace all that we are currently doing and have done, while we will continue to deepen our lens around every inclusion in our district and continue to work on behalf of the students we serve, and most importantly, keeping our eye on consistently doing what is in the best interest of our students and families. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, Carla. With that being said, the superintendent did make recommendations for personnel. Is there a motion to accept those recommendations?
So moved.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Mansfield and seconded by Mrs. McKittrick. Any discussion? Mrs. Mansfield?
I did notice that Ms. Marilyn is on there, and I know we'll have more time to say things about her, but I just, I couldn't let her go by on our list without saying a word or two about what she's meant to grounding this district, especially when you're a new board member. There's nobody that will put your feet right on the ground like Marilyn. When I, when I had pie in the sky eyes and when I was first made board president, I thought I was some kind of big deal. And I talked to Marilyn, and she gave me the list of people who'd come before me, and it really put me in my place, because once you see those names, then you really feel like you have to up your game. So she's, she's a joy, she's a treasure, she's soft-spoken, she's a person of few words. She put up with me sitting next to her for several years. When Ms. Sims sat next to her, she would pester her constantly, and they would go back and forth. So she has put up with so many of us and with everything with David's office and phone calls that none of us could even imagine for more years than we can imagine. So great blessings to her and congratulations, and a well-deserved rest and a treasure that she's been to this district.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mansfield. Mr. Bravo?
Yes, I'm, thank you, Mrs. Mansfield, for picking that up and saying something. I just wanna echo that as well. More than anything, there's just been a sense of consistency and continuity that's been there, that's really been beneficial, I think, to the board members. If you think with how long she's served in that office and in that role, how many board members have sort of cycled through, and one of the few constants there was Marilyn. And so we appreciate everything she's done for us, and I know we'll get a chance, as Mrs. Mansfield said, at some point in the future, to recognize her for her service. But I just wanna, just wanna pick up and echo that and say thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Yes, I do know what Mrs. Mansfield and Mr. Bravo said. Marilyn has been here for a long time and done a lot for a number of superintendents, and most people don't realize that when you have somebody in her position, they're basically like, they're basically a superintendent, because they do all the work to keep the superintendents on track and make sure they get their work done. So I wanted to make sure that we know that she did a great job. We love her dearly, we're gonna miss her dearly. Again, we will be able to say more later, but Ms. Marilyn is a lover to death, and she has done so much for all of us in this school district. And she was a student of Akron Public Schools as well, graduate, so she's been around us for a long time, and we appreciate her and thank her. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, and just to add to that, thank you, Ms. Klacker, for everything that you've done. When I talked to her earlier, she says she's been here 50 years and 20 years in the superintendent's office, and when someone tells you that, you don't forget those numbers. So thank you very much. Just remarkable service. That's, you know, just one thing that we wanna say. So thank you again, and is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll accept the motion?
We did have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, wow, okay. So we'll do a vote, I'm sorry. Mr. Pendleton, roll call, please.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we return to Mr. Superintendent for resolutions and motions on the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the resolutions and motions presented in Category 21.
So moved.
Thank you. It's been properly moved by Mr. Bravo, and is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mrs. McKittrick. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll, roll call, please. Mr. Pendleton?
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Superintendent. Business Affairs recommendations?
And finally, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the Business Affairs Recommendations presented in category 23.
Thank you very much. It's been presented by the superintendent. Is there a motion on the table?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Mrs. McKittrick, seconded by Mr. Bravo. I'm sorry, Mr. Alexander. Any discussion on the motion? Mrs. Mansfield?
I just wanted to mention, I know there were some question about the PACS game and the, the good behavior game that's done. If, now that we're back in person, I would encourage board members to find out more about that if you've never seen it in, in use. I, I had the fortune of, of going with Mr. Craig from the ADM Board and one of our councils, county council folks at one point last year, and maybe, sorry, not in 2020, but in 20, or 2019, I believe. Time means nothing these days. But, um, just an incredible experience to see the, to see that in motion. So, if you need to have someone, I'm sure the Assistant Superintendent can put you in touch with a teacher who is using that or a school that's using it. It's really worth watching.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mansfield. Any other discussion?
This is a compliment, Mr. President.
It's, uh, Dr. Hall.
For clarity sake, clarity sake, to Mrs. Mansfield's point, didn't Finley Elementary School come and do a presentation before the board last year prior to COVID? I just make sure that I got that right. And I, that I'm not, that I'm not completing or refusing two different programs?
Yeah, it wasn't for this program, it was another program. It was a different professional development.
Okay, so, so, so there was a teacher, or teachers that came from Finley that did a whole presentation on PACS?
I think they did.
And impacts on student behavior. So, that's not this program?
It was a bigger presentation. It was one segment of a bigger.
Okay, it's not the one I'm thinking of, okay.
Right.
Okay, yeah, Dr. McWilliams Woods said, yes, it was a part of a bigger presentation, so yes.
Okay, got you. Okay, 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 that's good enough, all right.
Okay, um, thank you very much. Is, is there anything else? Any other discussion? Okay, Mr. Pennington, roll call, please.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. Next, we have superintendent's report. Dr. James?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. You know, I just wanted to say, we're still processing issues regarding, you know, what testing guidelines have come from the state, you know, in terms of that. We're working through, uh, we're working through that now. And also, as Mr. Williams talked about graduation, we're looking at the guidelines. We have some venues that change, so we're scrambling to get those all in order. And it looks like we can have in-person events, but it's just finding the right venue. And then there are some restrictions on the number of people who can be in the audience. So, we're working through that diligently because I believe it's Akron early college that's like the first one that we need to deal with. And other than that, the first couple of weeks, you know, of the return to school has been smooth for the most part. There's been a couple of questions, I know, from parents about wanting to switch. We have a schedule for that, and we'll be processing those. We accept applications through next week, and then after that, we'll be processing those. So, we can look at those changes after we're back from spring break and then finish out, out the year. I know there were questions this morning about what is summer going to look like. We're still working on that plan. There's a lot of stuff we're working on. We have a deadline of April 1st to provide some information to the state. And we should have, I believe, a more full report about that at our next board meeting. But there are, there's a lot of stuff still going, so we're not in, out of the woods yet just returning to school in person. There are lots of details that we need to work on and look forward to what our next school year is going to look like as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Dr. James? Hearing and seeing none. Thank you very much, Dr. James, for your report. We're going to move to president's report. Two, just two items to discuss. One is the superintendent search. First, I just want to thank Ruth Ryman from the district office for just doing an amazing job supporting us in this search and literally thinking of things before we could. So, uh, just, I, I couldn't even say enough about her. So, we will be here all day. So, thank you very much, Ruth. I know you're listening, you're somewhere. And with that being said, we have candidates coming in Tuesday and Thursday for interviews that we'll be doing here, as, as the board has narrowed the search down to eight candidates. And we're so appreciative of Ruth helping to lead the communications with those candidates and greeting them as they arrive. So, we're appreciative of that. Once we go through that first round of candidates, Tuesday and Thursday, we will do the second round for finalists. We will, as a board, make, be narrowing that down to a, a smaller number that we have not determined yet, and then moving to that final round. The one thing that I want to put out to the board for a brief discussion right now is, is just, as we look to fine-tune those final details, two things that I need to get back to Steve on. One is about how do we want to do our open forums? If we're going to do them in, in person, in a socially or physically distanced room or have them just do it virtually? So, wanted to open that discussion up for the board to see what their pleasure is. Anyone?
Are the candidates, some of the candidates I know are coming in doing it virtual, and some are doing it in person. So, if we did, uh, those who are doing it virtually, how will we get them into be part of it? They do it virtually then, or are we going to do half virtual and the other half in person?
So, this is for the final round, which will be in early April. We're, the board has already decided, I don't know, whatever meeting that was, that that final round will ask all candidates to come in person. So, it will be in-person. They will be here, but the question is, will the forums be just virtual? Or will they, will we also offer them somewhat like this, both virtually and a few people in person?
I would like to see us be creative and offer that in-person forum, maybe in a larger space, maybe in a space that's not even ours, where we can, you know, create circles on the floor if we have to and, and let people socially distance. But I would love for us, to see us be creative.
Okay.
I agree.
Mrs. Mansfield?
I agree. I think that it would be nice.
And then we're going to go to Mrs. Autry.
We do know that, um, obviously there are challenges with technology. But there, I, I can't tell you what it means to be in person. And, you know, our, our staff is in person, our students are in person now, or at least have the ability to be. So, if we can do it in, in some kind of vein that's the same, where people have the ability to be safely, of course, and with restrictions, because we don't want people going willy-nilly, but, yeah, if we can.
Okay, Ms. Autry?
Yes, thank you. So, just keep it in mind, you know, as we continue to offer both options for our families and students and teachers, and now, you know, school board, I feel like we should also keep that same, you know, frame of thinking moving forward. So, um, people who want, who, you know, hear from our candidates should be able to do so whether in person or virtually. So, I think we should offer both options. I agree with Mr. Bravo, maybe a different space so that we can accommodate as many as possible, probably on a first, on first-serve basis, but definitely having both options available.
Thank you. So, I, I'm sorry if I didn't give a fuller context to... So, as we were looking at even doing the first round in a different space, technology became a potential challenge when we don't have control over it. So, that was something to be, that we would have to consider. So, Ruth will help us think through how to, you know, what spaces might be available that we could accommodate that for. But I just wanted to put that out there. If we do do both options like we are doing today, that may limit where we can do it and how many people we could have in person. But I think we should at least explore it, it sounds like, from what everyone's saying. And I saw someone mention something in the chat. It's hard to talk and look.
That was me. I was just mentioning that maybe part of that creativity of technology is the issue, but we can find something different. Maybe we can look at, you know, hiring someone that has experience in that. Because I'm sure we're probably not the first folks that have offered a hybrid event or something during COVID. So, maybe there's an organization, and I mentioned one, that I won't say publicly, but, uh, but maybe someone like that would be an option.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm going to put that in my notes to talk with Ruth about and see how we can, might, we might make that happen. Any other comments or feedback on that?
Yeah, I just would agree with Ms. Autry's comments, Mr. President, as far as offering, you know, continuing to offer the diverse options of in-person and remote.
Okay, and then we want to finalize. Thank you very much, I'm sorry, Dr. Dr. Hall. I, I have that down. We'll have a conversation with Ruth tomorrow. The last thing is just finalizing, who do we want the groups to meet with? Right now, we have community partners, APS staff, and then an open forum for anyone in the community who wants to meet. We did, um, we received a request from the mayor, for example. So, we may want to try to fit a 15 or 30-minute meeting with the mayor as well. Is there other groups? Because I want to make sure that I get to Ruth and Steve kind of that outline of what we want that day to look like. So, though, right now, those are the three things we've talked about, as well as the actual interview with the board. Anything else? I see Ms. Autry.
Thank you. I, I like the focus groups that we reached out to. I think that was a nice variety of folks who, who need to meet our candidates, but especially our students definitely need to have their own opportunity because sometimes those tend to wash out their opinions and concerns. So, I really want them to have the opportunity to meet with the candidates. And then, again, families, guardians are really important as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bravo?
Yeah, and I would maybe just suggest, and I know that these are going to be full days, but our, our partners, and especially our named partners, have invested a lot in APS, and it may be worth at least offering that opportunity for some of our named partners, especially in, in some of our community stakeholders, like, uh, who, who really get behind Akron Public Schools, like the Greater Akron Chamber and folks like that. So, maybe worth just considering our partners and stakeholders.
Thank you. Yeah, we, we already had that group on the list, so we were trying to make sure we...
For the individuals, individual meetings?
Indivi, no, we don't have, uh, we're not going to have room to have individual meetings with every partner, but we were going to do one group forum, right, small forum, with the, those partners and stakeholders. One open forum for anyone who wanted to attend, and then one for APS staff that we wanted to attend. So, they would do a brief presentation and then open it up for questions. Steve said he would send, we would do some type of link where people in the community can provide, you know, submit their questions ahead of time, and then he would moderate the, the, that discussion. So, we would just need to figure out what all groups we want to have open, and then Ruth can help send them a link, and they can submit their questions in advance, and he can moderate that as well, or she can moderate that as well. And then do the open session, and we probably have to publicize that on our social media and, and on our website. But we can work with Ruth and Mark Williamson on that once we figure out, you know, what those groups are. So, the new groups that I heard was students and families. So, we have community partners, APS staff, open community forum, students and families. So, is, do, is the families different than the open community forum? I just want to ask that, just so that I'm clear what I'm communicating. Okay.
Depending on the community is a parent or has a student that goes to our school, so...
Okay. All right, I appreciate that. And then, okay, so I'll work with Ruth to try to figure out how we do that. We may want to broaden it past just the student board members. I know that's what we did for our focus groups. And then we also are going to give the candidates an option to do tour of a few of the buildings, which we will have to work out those logistics as well. So, there's a lot to do with that. So, any other questions? I think I have my task at hand of what to do next, but anything else you're thinking of that I should make sure I communicate with Ruth and Steve? I'm sorry, I saw Mr. Bravo wrote, I'm looking, do we have this in an updated document? No, we're trying to, sorry. So, Patrick, I'm sorry, Mr. Bravo asked, do we have this in an updated document? And the answer is no. My task today was to figure out those final details, what's the will of the board, and then work with Ruth and Steve to, to make that happen, to come up with what that final schedule would look like when we have them in person in that final round. So, um, I think I've heard what you said, and we want to add two more sessions and then try to fit in a, a one-on-one meeting with the mayor and, um, yeah, and put some breaks in there. So, anything else? All right, we appreciate it. And then the last, the last thing, which is really quick, really excited about this, actually. I've talked to many people about it, so you probably know I'm excited about it. We're having a joint meeting April 1st with city council, where we will explore how we could work together to create a citywide broadband access network, which we know during COVID, one of the, the issues that's been exacerbated was broadband access. And we also know that people aren't going into job buildings to apply anymore, they're all online. So, this is good for our families as well as our students. So, we're looking at how we might be able to partner. And, you know, one of the things about the, the ESR funds and the COVID relief funds is to work on issues that may have been exacerbated or, uh, brought to light and, and challenged us during COVID. So, this is one that we feel, uh, Mrs. Summersville and I, when we met, felt like it could be something that we could work together. I know the mayor and Mr. Hardy has already had a conversation with Dr. James. So, we're really excited for all the board, council, the mayor, and Dr. James, and whoever else needs to be there to sit down and start talking about how we might make this happen. So, I don't know if you have anything else, Dr. James, to say about that?
No, just, you know, the...
No, just, you know, the initial conversations around, um, you know, in terms of our ESER funds and the need in the community. Um, we had a lot of that experience during the last year with some of our students who did not have appropriate internet access. So that's a problem, uh, you know, in the community.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, any, any questions about that? That's all I had. Any questions or discussions from the board? Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to, uh, treasurer's report, Mr. Pendleton.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar. It's a perfect lead-in to give a summary and, uh, discuss some of the differences between the various rounds of federal stimulus dollars. And at your desk, uh, and for those board members online, I'll send you a highlight of this, is a comparison document, uh, between and around the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Relief Package, uh, commonly referred to as CARES Act ESER 1. Uh, and I'll just hit the highlights here, CARES Act Number 2 and, uh, ESER Number 3. ESER 1, as you know, uh, was awarded last year and was available for us to spend on qualified expenditures back to March 13th of 2020, and those funds needed to be spent, uh, up through and including September of this year. That dollar amount, as reported publicly and through Finance Committee, was around $10 million. We will expend our full allocation of ESER 1 funds by the end of this fiscal year. Uh, as you're also aware via board report and Finance Committee meetings, ESER 2 was allocated at $42.7 million, and those funds need to be spent through September of 2022. And albeit this is an estimate, there's information being released from the Department of Education today on ESER 3, as you've been hearing about this in the national and local media. ESER, ESER 3 estimate is expected to be 2.2 times ESER 2, which would be approximately $96 million. Now, your table suggests that those funds need to be spent through September of 2023. However, I believe the Department of Education has used, issued a request for an additional year, and I, I believe that has been recorded, however, it's not in writing yet, nor is our official allocation, of which we'll be reporting on soon. I believe these funds are available through September of 2024. The second page of the summary talks about the local education association, us being Akron Public Schools, and the uses. And you know, from our earlier resolutions and our, uh, very quick response to this with our employees, that the ESER funds may be used for the same allowable purposes, including hiring new staff and avoiding layoffs. In addition, on ESER 2, in the middle of the page, it adds, addressing learning loss, preparing schools for reopening and testing, repairing and upgrading projects to improve air quality in school buildings already, uh, permitted under the CARES Act. And ESER 3, you see, is quite a bit of additional language, but the top sentence there, I'd like for you to highlight, an ALIA must reserve not less than 20% of its total allocation to address learning loss. Now, the superintendent and teaching and learning curriculum instruction staff has a plan due, uh, to the state of Ohio on April 1, which will be, I'm sure, subject to lots of discussion about our recovery efforts, uh, and plans. But this is a, a very good, high-level document to talk through the spending allowable, allowable spending. And then on the last page, it does have an equitable services component, a maintenance of effort component, component, maintenance of equity, and obviously significant reporting components. What I'd like to leave you with tonight is, uh, the charge that I think, uh, we want to consider is to continue through Finance Committee about our public reporting of these funds. We do track them in a separate reportable fund, and I think you've seen that in board resolution with appropriations, uh, even with ESER 2 funds today. So we continue reporting on those and talk, uh, directly about how it connects to the academic side of the house. But I did want to get this in front of you, as it's likely going to be reported in the media, uh, very soon about this allocation. Again, these have to be for learning loss. This is going to take a new shape as we're returning back in person. So as we, I could walk you through some of the expenses. So when we are in a virtual environment and we're reimbursing the district for spending that is unusual, spending like the delivery of meals, or spending as it relates to transportation in a socially distanced manner, those were all qualified expenses. So what we haven't navigated yet is being back in person and having that same expenditure qualify for, is it ESER and COVID related? So we're back in, in person. These are going to be some new rules to follow, um, but those plans will be developed over the next few weeks and month. I can take any questions, and I'm sure that we're going to be reporting on this each and ever board meeting monthly for a while.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pendleton. Uh, any questions or discussion for the treasurer? Uh, Mrs. Mansfield?
Thank you. Brian, can you, um, is there, is there a provision in this, or is there, um, any wording that says that the states can't cut somewhere else? So you don't have to go as far back as, but, you know, the one that we all remember that we still get asked questions about is lottery, right? So i- if, if we're getting these funds through, uh, through the federal government, are we going, do we know if we can or will lose funding through the state, therefore kind of knocking it right out of our hands, right? We, we never really get our hands on it because.
Right.
It's getting taken from one hand as quickly as it's being given in another. So is there any provision for that?
There has only been, uh, some conjecture at the state level with, uh, will this add to district's cash balance? There's only been speculation about that. No direct ties, nor do I believe that the legislature can reduce, uh, the school foundation aid. In fact, we saw just the opposite from the governor's restoration of some of the 3.7% cuts to the state foundation aid over the last year. So I don't anticipate that, however, there will be increased scrutiny as there's a perception that these funds can be co-mingled or they'll replace general fund, and they don't. They're separate federal funds to address learning loss, COVID-related expenses, and those two funds, just like our bond issue and construction funds, can never be co-mingled. So I don't believe so.
Okay.
But that debate will unfold between now and June, as we know we're heading into a new biennium budget, too.
And I don't mean it in a nefarious way. I just know that they've got budgets to balance, too. And, you know, we did face that original cut, and fortunately it was replaced. So, um, just wondering, I, I had heard a few things, uh, coming out of the federal budget, that that was, they, they considered writing that in, but I didn't know if it made it through the final.
Not to my knowledge.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Autry?
Thank you, Mr. President. So when I think about the impact that COVID has had on the emotional and mental health of our students, um, I really see an opportunity here, um, if that's going to be allowable for us to make some investments in that. And you know, I, some time ago, before I was on the board, there were health and wellness funds that looked like extra money at the time, but really wasn't for those areas. Um, but it seems now that this would be fitting, uh, to address some of those, uh, mental health, uh, implications as it relates to COVID.
Thank you, Ms. Autry. Specifically in that, uh, table, which I apologize to those board members online, you didn't have a, a copy of this, uh, there's a few programs like that specifically mentioned. Uh, extended day, comprehensive after-school programs, and such interventions respond to social, emotional needs of students. So I do believe the kind of programming that you're talking about will be a qualifying expense, definitely something that we can look at.
Thank you very much. Any other, uh, comments or discussion for, uh, the treasurer? Hearing and seeing none. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Pendleton. Uh, we're going to move to committee reports, legal contracts and board policy. Uh, Mr. Alexander?
No report, thank you.
Okay, no report, thank you very much. Finance and capital management, uh, Mr. Bravo?
Yes, uh, Ms. Aut- Ms. Autry is going to start for us.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, um, just briefly, continued thank you to Ryan and Ruth and team for continuing to build up our advocacy page. Uh, I want to encourage each and every person listening to visit that page. Um, new to the page is a letter, um, that is embedded for House Bill 1, better known as the Fair School Funding Plan. Um, and it's very easy to click on that, um, to get it straight to your legislator in support of a fair school funding plan, or House Bill 1 as it's known right now. So I want to encourage everyone, uh, to visit that. Um, also, um, thank you to Mr. Pendleton. Uh, he did have written testimony for House Bill 126, uh, regarding property values, um, and asking that local governments, when they, um, contest property values, to be able to notify owners regarding that. And I think that's it that I have. I'll turn it over to Mr. Bravo. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, as part of our Finance Committee meeting, we had reviewed the administrative contracts that were up for renewal today, which the board approved as part of the personnel recommendations. There were some requests from board members to, uh, also review some additional information, uh, from, uh, regarding administrative salaries and contracts, so we're going to continue to do that, including administration to pupil ratio, and also what was formerly known as the CUP report, which is the state of Ohio report that, that details some of that information. We also went over our strategic plan, um, and Mr. Pendleton did show, uh, a draft, uh, of our dashboard that we'll, that we're working on, or I should say they're working on, uh, as part of our advanced APS initiative. So, uh, we'll be rolling that out, um, and sharing that with the board, uh, in, in the future. Um, we also, uh, took, uh, a very quick preview of what Mr. Pendleton is working on as far as a draft, uh, budget document. For those of, for those folks that are used to seeing maybe something akin to, uh, sort of a GFAO, uh, award-winning sort of budget document, that's what we're going for, more of a narrative, uh, budget document that provides more of the story, um, as well as the numbers, so, or, or I should say maybe the story behind the numbers. We also talked about our, uh, MBE, uh, vendor information, um, as, with the committee, and that, of course, is also part of our racial equity policy, um, and also part of our advanced APS goals. Um, and then as Mr. Pendleton just went over with, uh, the rest of the board, we also reviewed our ESER funds. And so thank you to him for also putting the comparison together, very helpful, much appreciated. That's it for our report, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Any questions, uh, for Mr. Bravo or Ms. Autry? Okay, hearing, hearing none. We're going to move, wait. Okay. All right. Um, so we're going to move to instructional policy and student achievement. Um, and as always, we love to see these reports and updates, so we're going to turn it over to Ms. Mrs. Mansfield and Mrs. McKittrick.
I'm going to let Mrs. McKittrick start us off, and then Sophie.
Okay, so we heard, we had an update from Dr. Milk Williams Woods regarding our return to in-person learning and the transmission for our elementary students into the two types of environments, either in-person or remote, and it went very smoothly. Students and faculty alike, of course, were both excited to see each other in person, especially as our kiddos found their ways, ways to their classrooms. The elementary remote students successfully joined the new classrooms in our remote learning plan. For our secondary level, our middle school and high school students also returned last Monday and had a smooth transition to in-person learning. And our secondary remote students met their new Word for Mentors last week, attended their, any of their live classes, and worked through orientation modules so that they could learn how to access all their self-directed materials. So a huge thank you to all the faculty, principals, and support staff for making such a monumental shift to two new learning environments in the middle of the year. So, thank you.
Thank you. And just a few updates regarding college and career academies. Um, Boca CLC and Kent State University pioneered a program, uh, which identifies seniors from the classroom 2021, uh, to participate in a new credential called Community Health Worker. And those students will be taking some college courses over the summer, leading up to the opportunity to test for that credential, uh, which is a good working wage for students graduating. Um, and also Kent State worked with United Way on a grant that they obtained so that we can expand that ability to get that credential to all of our healthcare pathways, um, in the district. Um, and then they also continue to offer the STNA, uh, to all of our healthcare pathways in conjunction with Stark State University. Uh, also what was shared, uh, Kenla Garfield recently had a virtual job shadowing program, uh, which I heard was a really, uh, engaging, uh, opportunity where they had electricians, they had, uh, nursing, uh, professionals, um, as well as a live chef, um, as a job shadow opportunity, so, um, and then for Garfield will also be having, uh, a mock interview workshop upcoming as well. So it's nice to see that the College and Career Academy work is still proceeding. Thank you.
And by their graciousness, not by my insistence, my colleagues left me the fine arts presentation. We had the joy of hearing from Dawn Wilson, our learning specialist for fine arts, and she showed us some links that are contained in your, in your board doc, so I would encourage you to take a click on those. Um, one of them shows the Arts in the Middle Program, which is currently on display in person at the Akron Summit County Public Library through April 16th, and you can also see it virtually, and anyone can, so, um, and it was put together in a really fantastic way. And also, just so that you know, our, um, winter concert series is continuing, although virtual, and those are going to be individual recordings, and we got a preview of that as well, and that was just an amazing amount of work, um, not just by our students, but our amazing staff, through their creativity and through some incredible editing. So please, uh, take a look at that when you get a chance. And the last thing would be that we'll, uh, we did receive information that we're going to get, um, some summer programs that are adventure-typed and linked to community partners, so that this is, um, a- as we might say, more of a carrot than a stick. So we're looking forward to more information on that, and we know that, uh, they're working hard, so, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mansfield, McKittrick, and Autry. Next, we'll have the Equity Committee Report, uh, Dr. Hall and, uh, Mr. Alexander.
Yeah, we, um, uh, no report since, um, the last meeting, um, but we do have our next meeting on, uh, April 8th, and, uh, looking forward to working, really looking forward to continuing to work with, um, Ms. Chapman, uh, now in her new role, uh, as our chief. with, um, Ms. Chapman, uh, now in her new role, uh, as our chief DEI officer. So very looking forward to that, uh, and, uh, furthering that work as we move forward. So, um, that, that's our, that's, that's all I've got, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And that will conclude our committee reports. There's no unfinished business at the time, but we do have one new business item, which is waiving senior dues for 2020, 20, 2020, 2021. Uh, there is a resolution in board docs to do that. Is there a motion, uh, for this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Bravo, seconded by Mr. Alexander. Uh, any discussion, um, on this item?
Really great idea. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, um, I, I just want to echo, uh, what Mrs. Mansfield said, and, uh, as we think of through the impact of COVID, um, you know, senior dues could be one of those, um, hidden, uh, barriers, uh, and unattended barriers as you think about, uh, everything that families have to deal with today. So, uh, I think this is a, a great idea and resolution for us to move forward with. Uh, with that being said, uh, any final, uh, comments? Hearing none. Uh, Mr. Pendleton, roll call, please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, that is the end of, of those items there. The last thing is there is a, uh, re- uh, a, a need to recess into executive session. Um, and so we'll, uh, take a motion to recess into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 121.22G1 uh, for the purposes of considering the employment of a public employee or official of the school district.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by, uh, Mr. Bravo, seconded by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, Mr. Pendleton, roll call, please.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you very much, everyone, for joining our meeting today. I don't think there'll be, uh, an item to, um, from executive session, uh, to approve or anything. So again, thank you for attending our meeting and, uh, helping and working through with us our first blended model meeting of our Board of Akron Public Schools. And have a great evening. We will return, uh, after executive session, just to adjourn. So, uh, thank you very much. We're now in recess. All right. So welcome, everyone, and, uh, we have returned back from executive session for the, uh, regular board meeting on 22 March 2021. Uh, there is no further action, uh, to come before the board, uh, tonight, so, uh, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been, okay, thank you very much. It's been properly moved and seconded, appreciate it. We will see the board members back here tomorrow for, um, superintendent interviews. Thank you, have a great day, and good night, everyone.
All right.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, good night. All right, hey, everybody.
Have a good one.
Good to see you.
Who's coming tomorrow? Just, is it the four of us again, or?
So, it's Diana, so she's coming tomorrow.
Okay.
And I don't know who Karen's going to do. Good night, my wife, good night.
Hey, Brian. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
He won't leave you.